Begin the forum. So hello everyone and welcome to the League of Women Voters virtual forum for candidates running for Grant City Council. This forum is not open to the public and it's not being livestreamed, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel. In addition, the local cable stations will replay the forum on a schedule determined by them. Candidates, if for some reason your internet connection is lost, please call in using your phone. I'm Mary Santi. I live outside the city in White Bear Township. I will be moderating. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in their government. While the league studies take scans on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. The goal of our forums is for voters to learn more about the positions of candidates who will be on the ballot November 3rd. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum. And they are Tom Carr, Kim Erickson, Wayne Sorapo, and correct me if I'm wrong on your pronunciation.
Oh, that's correct.
Sorapo, and Jeff Schaper. Candidates have a minute and a half to give their opening statements, and that will be in alphabetical order. After that, the beginning speaker will rotate their each question. Closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order and you have one minute to answer questions, and then the opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal where you may finish your sentence. So we may begin now with opening statements, and that would be Tom Carr.
Well, hi, and thanks to League of Women Voters for allowing us to do this tonight. I just want to reiterate what I've said before. I know some people know I've run before, and I still am running for a council seat this year. I think I have a lot to bring to the city as far as experience. You know, the history of Grant and things we have done, I think is important, and as other council members have thought. And I'm going to try to continue going forward with that, trying to keep Grant what it is, and not trying to change, but to adapt to things that happen around us, and to always look forward to, you know, forward-thinking, to not do something that would jeopardize what we have currently. I think that's important. I think that's something that some politicians don't do, and that's what I would do going forward for Grant. We want to keep Grant the way it is, like Grant, just the way it is.
Thank you. Next up is Kim Erickson.
Hi.
Opening statement, please. Continue, please, Kim.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've lived in Grant for 12 years. I raised my children here. I love the area, and I'd like to keep it the way it is. And when I looked at the comprehensive plan and some of the changes, I showed concern that there might be, some of the wording might bring in some things like different types of housing, not single-family housing, some concern for city sewer and water, which would raise our taxes, and definitely raise our taxes. I know my son has to pay for water in Minneapolis. You know, I've listened to the minutes, and I'd like to be a part of it. I've ran a farm, and I did all the advertising, all the employing of people, hiring, feeding, selling, and I've talked to a lot of, a few, not a lot, but maybe five or six farmers, and they're concerned they're going to lose that. And so it's something that I really would want to be a part of, and making sure that it stays that way for, you know, one of the little gem here we have in other twin cities, you know, and there isn't that many left.
Thank you. Okay, if you would mute now, and Wayne unmute, we'll have Wayne's opening statement.
Okay, I just unmuted, so you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, all right. My name is Wayne Sorapo. My experience is I've served 35 years at the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and I've worked with many municipalities over my career. And the reason I'm running is I would like to keep Grant rural also, like to pass things on to other generations. My girls are interested in staying on our farm with their families, and so I'd like to keep the water and the area just the way it is, and to be protective of the environment and maintain our city roads and prevent flooding. That's basically what I'm interested in.
Okay, thank you. Next to go, if you would wait, mute yourself, Wayne.
Okay.
And the next to go is Jeff Schaper with your opening statement.
Hello, my name's Jeff Schaper. I'm running for a spot on the Grant City Council. I'm currently serving on the council after being appointed in January of this year, and then prior to that, I served four years on the Planning Commission. And I consider that an excellent learning experience for me, and I would recommend that to anybody that would be interested in running for any city office. I've lived in Grant for 30 years, and I've come to really appreciate how fortunate we are to live here. And like the others have said, we live in a beautiful area, and like everyone else has said, I want to keep it that way. I've traveled through the city, some parts of the city this election season. I've met some really nice people, and I've seen some beautiful homes, beautiful views, open spaces. It's just, it's really nice, and I want to work to preserve that. And so that is really the reason I am running. I want to keep what we have. I want to preserve our 10-acre density, and I want to prevent expansion of Met Council sewer and water in the city. I'm good.
Thank you. So now, having finished opening statements, we'll turn to questions. The questions were submitted on our League of Women Voters email, and I have lots of The first question, the first person to speak is going to be Kim Erickson. So Kim, while I'm reading the question, turn off your mute. You'll be getting a lot of practice doing that.
Okay, thank you. I need it.
All right. The question is, "Do you agree with the recent changes to the comprehensive plan, and why?"
I do not agree. And the re, excuse me?
Can you explain why?
Well, first of all, it's very hard for a citizen to just read what the changes are. I had to actually have an attorney friend of mine explain one of them, and I found out that it was, well, the wording is such that it's very open-ended and very easy to change, which is very concerning for me. It wasn't very black and white. I don't think the citizens had the opportunity to have any input whatsoever, according to the minutes I looked at. And that isn't what we're all about here. We have to have citizen participation, so important that they, it's their land, I mean, they're paying the taxes, they have the right as Americans to be able to voice their opinion. And I don't think they've had that either.
All right, thank you. So if you would mute, the next person to answer is going to be Jeff Schaper.
Okay. First of all, this notion that there was changes made to the comprehensive plan that would introduce higher density or city sewer and water is completely false. I was on the Planning Commission when we updated our comprehensive plan, the 2040 Plan. I worked with our fellow commissioners, our city staff, and all we did was some minor changes, or minor to the text. We simplified it, but it was so minor, there was absolutely no changes, none whatsoever that would affect our density, our sewer and water, that type of thing. So anything you're hearing about that is completely false. That's it.
Okay, next to speak is Tom Carr. Unmute yourself.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I want to, first of all, thank Jeff Schaper for all his hard work on the Planning Commission as they did go through and basically tweak the verbiage in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, for all intents and purposes, never changed, and it hasn't, and we didn't want to change it. So that's one thing. And then, you know, Jeff would have loved to have public participation. There were lots of meetings where residents could have went and offered their opinion or got involved, sent an email. That's what small government's all about. So to say that the residents didn't have a chance to participate is not true. There was all kinds of time and chances for them to do so if they wanted to. So not sure what Kim was talking about, but I do know that, you know, the comprehensive plan essentially is the same as it was before, and we look forward to that going forward. And thank you again to the Planning Commission for all their hard work and the staff.
Thank you. Next, Jeff, do you speak now, or is it Jeff? Jeff Schaper.
Oh, I think Wayne's up.
Okay. Thank you. You guys can keep track better than I can.
Okay, well, I have to agree with what Kim said about the changes seem to be hard. You'd have to go back to the prior plan that was 10 years ago and see what the changes were. But it seemed like there were a lot more, there was a lot more agreement and willingness to go along with Met Council, and that I think that with a city of 4,000 like Grant is, I don't think we have to go through all the changes that they recommend. So one of the things they were recommending is senior housing. I think they were talking about replating for that. I don't know if, we don't have sewer in Grant except for the high school, or the, you know, the elementary school that they put in. So I don't know how we would expand any type of services for those kind of things as in the Metropolitan Council's Land Use Plan.
Thank you. Now, you each have an opportunity for rebuttal, saying something more. If you have something more to say, raise your hand. Tom Carr?
Yeah, I'd like to just agree with Wayne. We don't have the ability to have senior housing in Grant because we don't have sewer
So why was that put in the comprehensive?
Wait, do you want to wait until Tom has finished with his 30 seconds?
Sorry, I didn't know if he was finished or not.
I'm done.
He's frozen.
No, I was done.
Oh, you're done. Okay, then Jeff goes next.
Yeah, everybody got frozen there for a second.
Saw his hand, saw Jeff's hand first.
Okay, I want to go back to the citizen participation in the update of the comprehensive plan. There were opportunities for citizens to participate. There was, there was times, and actually, nobody showed up. The comment from Wayne on the senior housing, there is no such thing. There was no mention of that whatsoever. So that is another false statement.
And now, Wayne, you'd like to add to that?
Well, I don't have the whole comprehensive plan memorized, but I did see it in there, so I don't think that accusing me of making a false statement is very accurate.
Kim, anything further? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the next question, and the first to answer this one is going to be Wayne Sorapo. And the question is, what do you think is the best, oh, in the past, road policy required 75% of affected homeowners to agree with the road improvements. In 2019, policy changes were made to require only 50% approval. Do you agree with this change? And if elected, would you consider resorting back to 75% for approval?
I don't agree with that change, and I would go back to the 75% approval.
And Tom Carr?
I didn't agree with it. In fact, I voted against it when I was on the council. I just think, I think we need a little bit more resident buy-in if we're into these programs. I can say that the last two that we did, however, based on the cost of redoing some of our roads, it actually was pretty reasonable, and, but I still, I just feel I think we should have more people buying in to do the roads. That being said, other people in the council voted. That's fine, win some, you lose some. In the big scheme of things, I think we have to worry about looking at our roads, doing the best we can to fix them for a cost benefit that doesn't strap the rest of the citizens of Grant, or keep maintaining roads that actually need some serious work. So from that point, I think the council made the decision, what they did on that basis, and I guess I can't fault them for that. I just, I agree that I think it should be a little bit more.
Thank you. Next to answer is Kim Erickson. If you would unmute yourself, and Wayne, please mute yourself.
I do not agree with the 50%. It should go back to 75%. And this is what I think. Because if they don't get 50%, then it appears, my understanding is, from what I have read, is that the city council members can proceed with the project at 100% of the property owner's expense. In the past, the road policy was 75%, and now it has changed. And why is that? And why, if it's only 50%, if you don't get 50%, why does the city council, can they just allow it? Say, well, we're going to do it anyway, at the citizen's expense, which could be very expensive?
Thank you. And finally, Wayne Sorapo, unmute yourself.
I think it's, isn't it Jeff? I think it's Jeff, hasn't spoken yet.
Have you spoken, Jeff?
No, I haven't. Am I okay to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was not on the council when that policy was passed, but I just want to point out that that policy does state that the city council may order the improvement if it's over 50%. It doesn't require them to do it. It's my understanding that policy was changed to hopefully promote more road projects and that type of thing. Personally, I am not, I don't think I would be comfortable approving a job or a project with only 50%. I would like to see a higher number, say, at least 60% or higher. But the way the policy is written, it does not require the city to order it, only that they may do it. So each project is looked at individually.
Okay, everyone has spoken. Now, someone want to add to that? Tom Carr?
Yeah, I guess I would like to also say it is a road policy. If you have a policy, you should follow the policy. But to Jeff's point, it does say that the city council, whether they got 70%, 50%, 30%, the city council can go forward on their own if they choose to do so for other reasons other than hitting that number. So it does say that in the policy, and it is a policy, not an ordinance. Thank you.
Kim Erickson, unmute yourself.
Thank you. The council can order the project to proceed at 100% property owner's expense. That's what it states. So they can decide, not the people. That's my issue.
Okay, any further? Tom, you've already had a rebuttal.
That's it, thank you.
Jeff?
I believe Kim is kind of cherry-picking a sentence there. I think she needs to look further, or earlier in the policy, it does say, where it says the 50%, it does say the council may, the word is "may," that is important, doesn't require it to be assessed to the 100% owners.
Why wouldn't she do it?
I wouldn't.
All right. I have another road question, and then we'll leave roads behind. The first to answer will be Wayne Sorapo, so you may unmute yourself. What do you think is the best road policy for maintenance, improvement, and taxation for both asphalt and gravel roads in the city of Grant?
Well, I think the best policy would be involve all the people, let the concerned people know what the project would entail, give them an estimate of the cost, maybe have some outreach to the people and availability of the council members to speak to the issues. I know in my own neighborhood, there's a petition to try and get the road paved, and this was not done in a proper fashion, and so I think that's partly due to the petitioner. So I know the council can't do every aspect of these kind of projects, but I think through the council meetings, we could kind of educate the public on the nature of what should be done.
Thank you. And the next answer is Kim Erickson.
Well, I think you'd have to develop a really good road plan. I think that doing a single road at a time, because each road may be very different in assessment, and that would keep the cost down for each individual homeowner. Whereas roads that are combined could be much more costly depending on which assessment or what each road is going to need. Those are some of the things that I've come to.
Okay, then next comes Jeff Schaper.
The best road policy, good question, and that can vary by person to person. Grant current has a policy that was put in place, maintenance policy, I believe, was put in place around 2016, and I believe that should be updated as like technologies change, time changes, and things like that. But, so I think that should be looked at occasionally and updated to reflect the current conditions. But we do have a policy in place. I know Grant has made big improvements over the years. Our grading contractor is an excellent contractor and does an excellent job, so I know our gravel roads have improved considerably. Like anything, there's always room for improvements, but we do have a policy in place, and, but I still believe it should be looked at and improved as needed.
Okay, Tom Carr?
Well, we do have a road policy we put in place, and we did that, it's like a seven-year average. We keep rolling through major stuff on the asphalt roads, it would be seal coating, crack filling. The gravel roads pretty much just need more grading, and they average out gravel, asphalt after all the seal coating and everything else to be about the same amount of maintenance per road, gravel and asphalt. I think, so we have a good policy going, we have good staff, we have some good contractors working with us on that, trying to keep us going. Also, we have contributed to the redoing of roads with city funds from doing that set list. So seal coat money that would have went to seal coating a road goes into actually redoing the asphalt. And so the city is contributing city funds for those things. We would have had to spend the money anyway, so why not? And then what is that doing? And that's less pottle patching, once you do the asphalt roads, which keeps the cost down for that, so we can put back into other roads. So it's a pretty comprehensive, good plan that we have going, and it's been working really well.
Okay, thank you. Anything more to add, anyone? Okay, well, leave the roads and go to flooding. The first to answer this question is going to be Tom Carr, and that deals with flooding around Sunny Brook Lake and Indian Hills Golf Course. Why did prior councils reject Valley Branch Watershed District's proposals to manage the Sunny Brook Lake flood?
You're talking historically?
Apparently so, yes.
Oh, I was not around when that actually, I don't think I was around when that actually got voted on. But historically, the Sunny Brook area was plotted when the county was our planner. They decided to put lots there. We do have historic 100-year flood zone areas back in the day, whether or not, how they did them, I don't know. They're a lot more strict now, and that area obviously has had some extremely high water levels. I've been in Grant since 1965 and took the school bus around. I've never seen water this high, nobody has. So we're in that 100-year flood zone plan where it's just very unfortunate that this is happening. Also, the outlet for the 100-year flood might have been, might have been there, maybe it's gone now, we don't know. But it's very unfortunate that this is happening. I really feel sorry for the people that live there. I feel sorry for everybody that has to deal with this flooding, and it's not, not something that anybody should have to deal with, but it's something that we have to do the best we can as a city within the finances we have to deal with it, and we're doing that, I feel.
Thank you. Next to go is Jeff Schaper.
First of all, I'd like to state that it's a terrible situation for those homeowners that are affected by the flooding. It's just, for me, it's really unimaginable after you've been living there for some probably 40, 50 years and never had flooding before, then all of a sudden, now we've got flooding. It's my understanding, the reason for the flooding is because, according to Washington County, there's been, I believe they said, seven years of above-average rainfall, and that area is a landlot basin, the outflow is just not there, or it's so high that the water will not flow out. It's a terrible situation, but if you've been in the area recently, the last same month or so, the water level has dropped dramatically. Keats is open. I wouldn't be surprised if Jocelyn will be accessible here in weeks if this weather pattern continues.
Thank you. And Kim Erickson, next to speak.
Okay. It's what I've read is, and the Grant Reporter has a video of the city of Grant contractor removing the berm on Sunny Brook Lake in 2017, allowing the lake to be lowered five feet. And after that time, I guess I'm wondering, who directed the city contractor to rebuild the berm, which has caused the homes on Sunny Brook Lake to be flooded? 12 homes, I believe, a lot of these people are elderly, and it's, they're going to lose everything, in my opinion. It's just, it's such a sad, it's so sad to me. I don't know who allowed this to happen. I wasn't in charge, is it the city council that was in charge at that time? Who makes those decisions to put that berm back up? And now that all these homes have gotten flooded in 2017, after 2017.
Okay, is that, do you have more?
That's it.
And the last to speak will be Wayne Sorapo.
Okay. I have a copy of table 5.21-3, which is a summary of past Sunny Brook Lake flood relief studies. I have a copy of table 5.21-3, which is a summary of past Sunny Brook Lake flood relief studies. And this was prepared by the Valley Branch Watershed District Water, and it's in the watershed management plan. And the last item on there is from 2003 to 2004. The Sunny Brook Lake Flood Relief Project Option Number Three, which they recommended, which was a project involving optimizing existing storage, installing a one-foot cubic foot lift station at Keats Pond, pumping water from Keats Pond to a new 7.2 acre infiltration basin and constructing a .5 CFS emergency overflow lift station that would pump water to a stream near Manning Avenue. The project was ultimately abandoned due to the city of Grant withdrawing its commitment to raising the low portions of city roads. So that's what it's in this report. And so my question is, why did this allow? Why was this allowed to happen? Why were 12 homes flooded in this area?
Thank you. And does anyone have more to add in this question? If not, we'll go to the, another, a follow-up question on the same topic. And the first to speak there will be Jeff Schaper. If elected, how should the city work with Washington County Public Works to be preemptive and minimize flooding damage in the future, as you all agree that it's not a good thing?
Well, I think the city is working right now with the Valley Branch Watershed District. You cannot, you cannot control weather. You cannot control rainfall. It's, like I said earlier, this is a terrible situation for the homeowners. But rain falls from the sky. We've got, had seven years of above average rainfall. You look at the county road 12. The county had, had to raise that and spend $627,000 doing so. Are we blaming the county for building a berm somewhere? Did the county cause that flooding? No, it's an act of God. It was rainfall. So I wish the city could do more, but personally, I don't, I don't know what they could do other than support these homeowners best we can, keep access on these roads. And if there is a way to reduce the flooding, absolutely. But at this time, I don't know of any.
Okay, next, next to go is Tom Carr.
Yes. I mean, obviously, you know, reiterating what we've talked about before, it's terrible that the flooding has happened. We feel sorry for the people that are involved with it. Also, just to remember that the water in the watershed is in charge of the water and there's nothing the city grant can do without the watershed being on board for that. And the watershed has studied the problem. And currently, they, they have, they have their own plan and how they want to, you know, address it. I've tried to give them other options and they don't, you know, they, they don't seem to think they'll work. So I think we have tried. I think I continue to try. It's just not a, it's not a good situation. I've talked to residents that live down there and they know that I'm trying, but there's not a lot I can really do. And, and the water's dropping, so that's good news. And so you know, we're going to do the best we can with what we got, with the money we have, with the efforts we can do. And working with all the partners involved with it to try to do the best we can, but it's not an easy situation. It's not a, it's not a good situation for the residents, of course.
Thank you. And the next to go is Wayne Sarapo.
Okay. Sorry, this Skype Zoom meeting is really difficult to participate in, but it's my understanding that in 2017, Larry Lanu had lowered the Sunny Brook Lake by five feet because there's a pump station that's installed there. So there's a way, I don't agree with what Jeff said, an act of God. We've certainly had more water than usual in this area, but that's not you know, we, we can definitely do something about it. It's not something that's out of our control.
Finished then, Kim Erickson.
Well, five homes have been crushed already, which is really a shame for people that are elderly. And in 2017, the pump that had dropped the water five feet was removed. Why would you do that? So I don't think it is an act of God. And then there was a berm put back in. And the berm which has flooded the wells, septic systems in people's basements. And now, homes are going to if they'd left the pump in place, it would have continued to pump and keeps the water level down. I don't know why it was removed or who said to remove it. But that was a huge mistake, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone have a rebuttal? Tom Carr.
Yeah, the pump that was put in was put in not with the watershed's approval at the time, I believe. Eventually, we worked with somebody to get some kind of an approval for that, I believe, but it was a temporary thing. I, I don't know why. We're not in charge of pumps. The city grant can't just pump water. It is a watershed issue, so. And they, if they want to pump, they can pump. We would not care. The question is, where to?
Okay, any further comments on this? We'll move to the next question and the first to, Wayne, you'd like to do your rebuttal.
I'd just like to say that I have a document also that says, it's a 2019 document by the Valley Branch Watershed District that says that they're planning to purchase flood-prone homes in, in Sunny Brook Lake. So if, if in 2018 they weren't flooded, how come they're planning on, on purchasing these lakes in 2019? So I mean, I think the city needs to work with them to figure this problem out. I think that's what we need to get more involved with.
All right, move to the next question. The first person to answer will be Kim Erickson. And the question is, if elected, how will you encourage citizen participation and transparency? Will you allow public comment at city council meetings to be part of the agenda and recorded meeting?
Yes, I would want to have all those citizens participate in the meetings. And be involved and bring people back to the town hall. But appears as though we're not allowed to go there anymore. I think I would do everything I can to try and put something together, maybe even a week before where people can can send questions in, we can answer them, we could zoom them, people that are before a meeting. So that people have the opportunity to get things addressed before a meeting. Would be kind of nice. I don't know if that's ever been done, but, but I think in all aspects, the citizens should be involved. And that's what's been disturbing to me. So I've seen that kind of fade away since I've been here. And would like it to be different. Very much different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wayne Sarapo.
Okay, I would definitely encourage participation. One of the things I would look into, I know this COVID situation has been really difficult as we're experiencing with the Zoom meeting. This is, I would much prefer meeting with people being on a stage like we used to do in the old days with meetings, but we, I think following state guidelines, we could have meetings at the town hall. We could do social distancing, require people to do masks, to wear masks. I would like to open the city hall back up again. Also, open it up to other activities and other meetings. We can do cleaning situations. I've been involved with this at my church where we sanitize the pews and we, we have social distancing. We have markers in the pews, six-foot distance. There's ways that you can do it. And that's what I would encourage.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Carr.
I brought public comment into the city of Grant when I came in as mayor in 2001. It wasn't there before. And so I was the one that started it. And I thought it was a good idea. And it was, till it was abused by people for political ends or whatever. And it's not just Grant. Multiple, multiple cities have had the same issue happen and they had to remove public comment for grandstanding and everything else. So we have public comment. It's just not on, on our recorded meetings. And that's fine. If people want to come, if they're coming to talk to the council, they can still do that. They, they're just not on, they can't watch themselves on TV. And if that's what they're coming for, then they're coming for the wrong reasons. And they should stay home. And they can always call me or email me anytime they want. I'd be glad to discuss any issue with them. Public comment is, is, you know, is to talk to all the council at once, but we're all available at any time. So I would not be in favor of that.
Thank you. Jeff Schaper.
I pretty much compare with, with what Tom said. But if I am elected, I, I, my phone number is published. My email address is published. I would welcome people to either call or email me. I support citizen comment at the beginning of the meetings. I understand there's been abuses years ago, and that's why it's not recorded. I think it works fine the way it is right now, being not recorded. We also encourage participation in public hearings. Residents have opportunities there as well. So I think we're, we're just okay on that.
Okay, now everyone has spoken. Does anyone have anything further to add? Kim Erickson?
Hi. So why is the 4H not allowed to use the city hall? The Gateway Trail Association told me they are also not allowed to use the city hall. And my understanding is only the city council is allowed to. So I don't think it's just the COVID.
Anyone else? Wayne Sarapo?
Yeah, I, I believe that citizen participation is so important, I think, for public meetings. We have the, you know, we can send email out to everybody. We can send, it's not that expensive to send a postcard letting people know there's a meeting coming up. City council meetings should be open. If someone has a comment or has a question, they should be able to address it at the meeting. Also, when the resolutions are voted on, the resolution should be read and then a motion be made and then the, the motion should be carried and then the resolution be re-read. And also minutes should be available and all this should be recorded. That's what I would do if I was elected.
Thank you. Tom Carr.
And once again, public comment is still at town hall. You can still come. You can still comment. None of that's changed. It's just not recorded. Thank you.
Okay, ready for the next question? Tom Carr, you begin this next question. What do you feel needs to be improved in the city and what will you do to or change to make that improvement?
Well, as I've stated for quite a few years, I don't think we really need to change anything. Improvement is a kind of a subjective word. We always are looking for improvements. Somebody has a good idea, you know, we, we have a different contractor that works out really well. We tweak a policy, we change, you know, minorly change something in our ordinances to try to make Grant a better place. Those are things that just come up day to day, based on who we have applying for applications and things that our staff and planner and our attorney and our engineer see that we should address. And we have a list of those and we keep working through those. And so that list is something I think we need to work through as we can. We're a smaller city. We don't have a lot of time and staff, but we work through those issues. Nothing is pressing at this time, which is good news. Grant's well-funded, well-staffed. We have good people working for us. And so everything, as far as I can see, doesn't require any major changes. Just maintain and keep going.
Thank you. Next is Kim Erickson.
Well, I think that it would be nice if the citizens of Grant could get together, we'd be with an attorney I know, and he can read through the comprehensive plan and explain it to them specifically what has changed. And will change down the road if some of these new ideas are left in place. And and I think that's some of the concerns I came across, just working with a friend. I think to amend the current comprehensive plan and back to pretty much what it was before, that the citizens that it is today and have a hard time understanding how it's worded or exactly what it says. They're busy. They don't have time to research it. And they believe in their city council. They think they're doing what's in their best interest. But I think that's not just exactly correct anymore. Things have been changed and I'm sure as heck not, don't like it.
Thank you. Next, Jeff Schaper.
The question was, what could you do to improve areas of the city? There's always room for improvements. I'm a former small business owner and I always look to improve. So I still, I think city of Grant, there's room for some improvements. I would like to, you know, examine our road maintenance policies, our road maintenance, how we maintain our roads and look for improvements there. And it's possible there could be some things that could be improved. I am not real happy with our city website. I think we should look into updating that. Making it easier to navigate and, and have easily found information where the citizens can go there without too much trouble and find what they're looking for. Another area I'd like to look at improving, and it's very minor, but I would like to see our maintenance of our city hall improved. Exterior and interior. All these things, I would like to work with others, with, with the council and staff to improve these items.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Carr.
Oh, didn't I already start this?
No.
I thought it's Wayne's turn.
Yes, you did. So we'll have Wayne then, next.
Thanks, thanks, Tom, for that straight. I agree with what Jeff and said. But I, I do believe that in communications really needs to be improved and have to make things more accessible. And I think a lot of the folks who are still working in the city, they have a hard time. They're raising families. They're, they're working. Issues that they want to find out about with what's going on in Grant. They need to have a pretty good source of that. So I think our website needs to be improved and so on. And that's what I would do if I was elected.
Any further from anyone? Okay, we'll go to the next question. Jeff Schaper will be first to answer. How and in what ways are you different from your opponents? On what specific issues do you differ?
Well, first of all, I'm going to tell the truth. That's probably the major difference. I'm not going to jump to conclusions. I'm going to use common sense. I'm going to do what's best for all the citizens in Grant. And I'm going to work with others. I'm going to work with our city staff, my fellow people on the council. And I'm going to do those things in a respectful manner and make the improvements or conduct the city business that way.
Next, Tom Carr. Turn yours.
I just had a little cough. It's an interesting question. I don't know. It was, you said difference, right? Different?
How do you differentiate yourself?
Right. And, and I, you know, I, for the people running, I know, I know them a little bit. I know Jeff Schaper. I don't know the other people, so it's hard for me to answer the question, but I can only answer what I can do, not how I'm different than them. And how what I'm going to do is provide consistency, common sense, listen to people, look at what we have in our budget, talk to our staff, take all the input and come up with a decision, not just what I want, but what's best for Grant with what we got. with a decision, not just what I want, but what's best for Grant with what we got, and what, what information I get from the team. And I think I've been really proud of the way we put a team together to run the city. So we're not bickering, we're not fighting, we're working together. I, I lose some, I win some on the council table. But at the end of the day, we respect each other, we go forward, and that's the kind of city council we should have. That's what the residents deserve, and I think that's what they want.
Thank you. Next, Wayne Sarapo.
I would be truthful, and I would be respectful, listening to people and communicating to people. And again, I can't overemphasize how much outreach is needed in our city. I've spoken to so many people, and they're like, what's going on with, with the city? The Victoria Station has a nickname, Victoria's Secret, because nobody knows what's going on out there. People drive by, they see things going on at the site, what's happening. So things like that need to be really out there. We need to be informative, we need to have open meetings, we need to have people at the meetings. And if we can't do that, we need to send things in the mail. I'd even knock door to door and talk to people or have events. We need to get the word out on what we're doing in the city. That's what I would do.
Thank you. And Kim Erickson.
Hi. Um, well, I've never been in office before, and I, and I really love people, and I love family, and I love our rural character. I just have no idea how much. And I think if I were in there, I'd be doing a lot of research and working really hard to keep the rest of them in line. So they did what was best for the citizens of Grant.
Any further from anyone? Tom Carr.
Um, just with a couple of things. We don't go around, if people can do what they want. One of Grant's models is welcome to Grant, leave me alone. You know, so I'm not, we're not going to go around wondering what people are doing on their own property, as long as it doesn't seem like they need a permit or something like that. We're just going to let them do what they want to do. And the second thing is, we would, we, we would beg for people to come to council meetings if they want to come and really talk and be productive and do something. Every city wants that to happen. Every city wants their, but, but people are busy, and they don't come. And then they don't know what's going on because they don't come, they don't listen, look at the website, they don't call me. Can't help that.
Thank you. Kim Erickson.
Uh, and they can't read the new comprehensive plans, and they don't understand it. And that's a real problem for the people.
And Jeff Schaefer, you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on Wayne's statement. I've been traveling around Grant here the last couple of weeks. I've met wonderful people, and almost everyone says they love it here. I have had little to no complaints. People like where they live, they want to be left alone, they love their privacy. I just haven't come across the issues that Wayne has brought up.
And Wayne wants to add?
Well, I too have been traveling around, and I've lived here for 33 years. And frankly, I haven't been as involved in city government as I should have because of my employment at the Pollution Control Agency. I was advised to, to stay at arm's length from a lot of the issues. So I kind of flew overhead on some of the issues. But now I'm getting involved, and I do think communication needs to be improved.
Okay, I think that has to be the last question. And we're running out of time, so we'll turn to closing statements. And the first to give that will be Jeff Schaefer.
Okay, thank you. What will Grant get if I'm elected? Well, number one, you're going to get common sense. You're going to get a willingness to listen. And I will have a commitment to follow Grant's code of ordinances. And I also will commit to working with my fellow counselors and city staff. I also will look for improvements, like I said, possibly to our road maintenance, to our website, and city hall maintenance. And lastly, I'm going to do this without causing conflict. I'm going to be respectful and move our city forward.
Thank you. Next comes Wayne Sarapo.
Okay, I, I too would like to avoid conflict. I think my experience with the Pollution Control Agency has enabled me to work well with people. I was a four-year member of the Washington County Workforce Development Board, where we tried to bring jobs into the county and improve the well-being of our citizens. And I would like to do that for Grant. I would like to, to see it kept rural. I would like to see the area protected from pollution. I would like to see flooding stop. I would like to see a, a uniform road enforcement policy, and have a, a good time doing it. I think people can have fun together and be respectful of others. Listen to people and be respectful. That's what I would promise if I'm elected.
Thank you. Kim Erickson, your closing statement.
Um, I'm going to work hard to earn the trust, and be a good steward of the citizens' tax dollars. I will make it my mission to keep Grant a rural gem of the Twin Cities. I will assist in developing long-term plans to keep our infrastructure sound and good, and, and the citizens very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom Carr.
Uh, I would do what I've tried to do since I had, had the honor of being on the city council. And that would be to keep going forward, keeping Grant the way it is, which if I look around, as I, when I was a kid here in 1960s, it hasn't really, really changed that much. And I think we need to keep it that way. And to all the people that say we're developing, no, we're not. We're keeping to the ordinances that we've had since 1982. And we're, we're developing the way the ordinance say we can develop. We're not, we're not, we're rural residential. We're going to stay that way. I think that's what everybody wants. That's what everybody hears that they want, you know, from everybody that we talk to. And so that's what we're going to do. Stay fiscally responsible, adjust where we have to for inflationary things, because per the comp plan, we have to hire out other vendors for our work. But that's okay, because it keeps our costs down, keeps our tax base down, and lets people stay in Grant for a long, long time. And so that's what we're going for. And that's, if elected, that's what I'll keep doing.
Well, thank you, everyone. I just have a couple of announcements. We will put all of our forms on our YouTube channel. And you will find links to that channel on YouTube. And our website also has a list of those recordings, and that is www.lwv-wbla.org. You can request an absentee ballot right now on the Secretary of State's website, mnvotes.org. If you need to register or update your registration, you can also do that online, or when you go to vote in person. That ends our forum. Thank you to the candidates for speaking to voters about issues and for coming forward to run in the City of Grant. Thank you to our volunteers and to viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting by November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, guys.